Hello? It works.
Okay, I want to call the meeting, the special town hall meeting.
Excuse me, sir, this is, this is a town hall meeting. Do you have an agenda or a, or published, you know, order of roster? This is not the published agenda for a special town hall meeting. This is a, this is not a town hall meeting. This is a, this is a, not a special town hall meeting. This is a town hall meeting and it's not a special council meeting. So that means that there's no presiding officer. It's, uh, to hear from the citizens is what we are here to do tonight.
I can tell you that because there is a quorum present.
Right.
This is...
What?
An official meeting.
It's not an official town hall meeting.
According to section two dash six, this is a forum and we have to have a presiding officer and that he is the mayor, the mayor pro tem.
Okay, well, I mean, this is not an official town hall meeting. This isn't, this is a, this is an official town hall meeting. This is not an official council meeting. Is this, that's what I'm saying to you. So, in other words, I call the meeting to hear from the responses from the people. And if you don't want to hear the people, that's fine. The mayor should be here if this is a special meeting, if it's a special council meeting. And apparently it's not.
It's not special, but you got it for by state law. You have to open the meeting, have your discussion, close the meeting. You have to have minutes.
Okay. Okay, but what I'm saying is, this is not, this is not an official town...
There's nothing you can do except to start the meeting, have your discussion however you want and close it. That's all we're doing.
Okay, great, so then, alright, so then, alright, but what I'm saying to you is that this is not an official council meeting, okay? You understand? Yeah, that's fine. And the press knows. And the press is here. Okay. So you understand what I'm saying? You understand what I'm saying? Great, so if you understand...
But do you want to say that if we did not do this, we would be...
We're violating Freedom of Information Act.
No, we wouldn't. There are town hall meetings all the time. This is not a council meeting. It's been...
Sorry, as long as there's no attempt to change existing town policy, it's not, I mean, it's...
It's not.
Correct, and, and, and I agree with that. But I had to, as mayor pro tem today, open the meeting. That's all I'm doing, is opening the meeting now. The meeting is open.
Okay, but you didn't, okay.
And I am giving you the floor.
Okay. Okay, are we done with that?
Well, according to the law, we are, I guess, yes.
Okay, well, yes.
You have the floor, bro.
Thank you. Well, now that we're done with that, the quorum. Well, he just did. Did you get your...
I would like to make a motion that we stop this meeting.
Okay.
I second it.
Okay. Aye. Okay.
Are you opposed to it?
No, aye. Thank you very much. And thank you, folks, for coming to this town hall meeting. Again, the whole purpose of this meeting is to hear from you and to get your responses on what you think the council should be working on. A couple of months ago, about a month ago, I put out a Facebook post on the citizens' page and asked for input into what, or what items you thought that we should talk about, or what we should be discussing or working on as a council. People gave me hundreds of responses. I narrowed it down to eighteen on that, you have a list in front of you, I suspect, right? Everybody has a copy of that? If not, it should be on that paper. Uh, there's a paper with the following of the, of the actual items that I narrowed it down to. Anyway, these are the items that we had decided that, that I got off of our Facebook post and I said that this is the subjects that y'all wanted us to talk about. And in no particular order, but grouped in similar subject matters, okay? So, if you look on your list, it may be a different numbering scheme, but it's the same information up here as I have on this list. And this is just basically, to hear from you guys on each one of these subject matters. I know you probably can't see this, but, um, one of the things that we talked about on Facebook is a need for a town welcome center. Some people say that there's no official welcome center to the town when they come in. And we did have at one time, uh, I believe it was the Chamber of Commerce was doing that, that function for us, um, as, acting as a welcome center. And I believe the town has some materials when people come into the town. But that's the kind of things that y'all said to me or to, to the Facebook posts that y'all were interested in. A town comprehensive planning, uh, package, or a town comprehensive planning plan. We have one, and I'm, y'all probably are not aware of it, but that plan was done and approved by the council, I believe, um, about a year ago.
Last year.
And we all, we all looked at it. It's pretty in-depth, but y'all probably don't have a clue as to what that is. Uh, again, this information is available to you on the, from the town council, from the town, uh, town hall. But I know that y'all would want, probably want to know what's in the plans for the next four years, five years, ten years out of the town. And the way they did that information would be from the comprehensive plan. But since y'all don't have a clue what that is, I know that y'all need to have input and invite to all look at that comprehensive plan. Um, is there any comments about those two subject areas? It's on a, it's on the town website. I believe, Bob, you have a copy of it in the town hall also, right? Okay. So in both places. Okay? No, what I'm suggesting, or somebody suggested to us, is that when some new, like, we had a couple of new people that chimed in on the citizens' page and said, hey, I'm new to Irma, I just moved here. What's what? Where, where'd I go to get gas? Where'd I go to get power service or something like that? All that stuff is published in our town. I think we have a copy of that out there, don't we, Bob? That little, that little thing that the chamber puts out?
Yes.
Welcome to... Yeah. That's sort of like the welcome wagon or the welcome to Irma package, but there is no formal group that does that. And not that we should be doing that as a town, but we do have information available to people that want to come to the town. And that's what we're trying to establish. Yes?
That's on the web, much of that information is on the town website as far as where you go to get your electricity and such as that.
It is, but, but not to the extent where it's, it's a one-page deal. You can open to a book and say, hey, this is a welcome book for, you know, welcome to Irma. Here's a book, open it up, there it is, everything's right there laid out. I'm not suggesting anything. Somebody asked that we don't have a welcome package or welcome wagon committee or anything. And that's what they're, I guess they're asking.
When I moved here, I got a, um, a welcome coupon book in the mail.
Mm-hmm.
Business is in Irma. I don't understand that half, I got to give them.
The chamber.
Those are two thousand dollars.
Okay, okay, well, I... It is. And by the way, we're taking notes here, so we can, whatever y'all suggest to us, we're going to take it back to the rest of the council and hopefully we'll respond to that. Okay. Yes, sir.
Barry, back in my tenure, when I was working with the Coastal Home Owners Association, we included a notebook, a, a three-bonded, a notebook that we gave to every new resident. It included information that, at that time, I'm not even sure the town had a website. This is back in the early nineties. But we included information that we could get from the town regarding precincts, the voting plates, and included information about banks, schools, uh, any other official publication or office that you wanted to contact. We included gifts, coupons from merchants that we dealt with as a homeowners association when we had a yard of the month award. This was something that we gave to every new resident. Unless the homeowners associations had just withered away to nothing, I don't see why this is something that the town could not ask the associations to do, or with, you know, some united effort with the town to try to do that.
Okay. That sounds good.
Any, any, anything that you can physically get to a new resident with a welcoming package or something like that?
That's fine. Alright. Any more comments on that? None? Alright, let's go to this next one. We're talking about dilapidated billing ordinances as applied to residential and commercial, um, enforcing existing landlord ordinances, and a committee to help with home repairs, grass cutting, raking, light repairs, stuff like that. Alright, I know that's a lot to go in the same subject, but they're all kind of related to each other. Dilapidated billing ordinances. We did pass a dilapidated billing ordinance for both residential and commercial. That building ordinances is on the website. It says that you must keep in good repair your buildings, your, your home and residential, uh, commercial buildings. It also, we passed a landlord ordinance some years ago. And that landlord ordinance is much more stringent than the dilapidated billing ordinance in the sense that landlords, since they're running a business, we consider that being a landlord as a business, that you have to maintain your property even higher standard than you would a residence, a resident owner. Um, the problem is, um, some of those ordinances, some of that laws that we enforce in there are not being enforced to the extent that it should be. We, we need to tighten up on it, I believe, but...
What are the penalties for not just obeying that ordinance?
For the landlord ordinance?
Yep.
What is it, ten eighty-seven, Bob? Thousand eighty-seven dollars.
For violation?
Yeah. Maximum for violation.
Mr. Walker?
Yeah.
Since you brought up the thousand eighty-seven, uh, I went to court the other, last night. Witness Judge Adams in Whit's presentation with our illicit discharges. And she said in the courtroom that five hundred dollars of that thousand eighty-seven goes to the state of South Carolina automatically. So when she said she was going to reduce a fine, she said, I reduce the town's part of the fine, the state's going to get their money. And that's something a lot of residents don't understand. They say, oh, if I spit on the sidewalk, it's going to cost me a thousand eighty-seven dollars. No, that's what the, the fine of the town of Irma is, five hundred dollars. Five hundred dollars and eighty, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars is the state of South Carolina.
How much does the town of Irma get?
Of the five hundred dollars, I'm not sure exactly how much, how much of the five hundred does, does the town get of the thousand eighty-seven? Five hundred.
It's an ordinance.
It's an ordinance, yeah. Thought so. But the, and the judge can reduce that.
It's a thousand.
Well, I understand that, but a lot of people have the, the mindset that the town of Irma is, you know, holding a gun on everybody, getting a thousand eighty-seven dollars for some insignificant thing or some major thing. Uh, the state of South Carolina has, has made that part of their money cow, so to speak.
No, that's...
That law was passed by...
That's our law.
In, what, two thousand or nineteen ninety-something?
It's no difference when it was passed. You have a fellow citizen find a thousand eighty-seven dollars because he got a damn flat tire while he's going for cancer. And I'm speaking without knowing the man. I'm going, or he said. They didn't flame me when I read that.
Yeah.
They, they get ten, fifteen days to fix the problem. How hard is it to put air in a car?
Never mind. For God's sakes, the man was going for cancer treatment. He had a flat tire on his car in his yard. I mean, I couldn't expect that in North Korea.
Mr. Donald, I would, I would imagine, though, if that went to court, and it would, that either Judge Evans or Judge Adams would understand that.
Well, is that insult to entry? Now you already have to pay that fine, now you have to take off work or get out of the sick bed and come to court.
That's a penalty, I shouldn't object to.
Believe me, I think it's, if I may... I think it's, I think it's crazy that every ordinance comes with a thousand eighty-seven dollar fine.
Max.
Max. But it's really going to be five hundred dollars. It's really minimum going to be five hundred dollars. And to me, a parking ticket at five hundred dollars, that's crazy.
Parking tickets are twenty-five dollars.
Hold on a second, hold on a second, who's that? Like a sliding scale sort of thing?
We need a lawyer to answer that, but you can come up with a civil code because right now they're all criminal offenses.
Right. They, they have jail terms associated with it.
You can have a civilian, I guess, a civil code that the town could adopt and put fines whatever you want. You have to draft it all up in an ordinance. We tried it once before, about fifteen, sixteen years ago, and council wasn't interested in it. You could always try again. And outline everything, how you want fifty dollars.
I'm sure there's some negative reason as to why you won't do it. I'm trying to figure out why we haven't been willing to do that.
I don't know, I can talk to you. But I mean, nobody goes to the state in a civil plane either, but that's why a lawyer has to determine what the real reason is.
Okay, if I could ask then you to clarify, if the town goes to a civil code structure, it can establish its own hierarchy of fines?
Correct.
From beginning with a verbal discussion and then a notification with hearing violation?
It's fine.
And then it can work up to a monetary fine?
That's correct.
And nothing goes to the state?
That's correct.
There's the answer to the problem. If you don't want to piss off citizens where they find that they don't know where the money goes, and then when they find out that it goes to the state and you have no control over that, then you've lost your control of your criminal code right there. You cannot, with five of you on this council, come together with a civil structure that eliminates that, uh, if you can't cure that problem, then you're not going to solve it. You can't get your citizens to back that up.
If I may, and, and again, I'm going to keep saying I'm not a lawyer, so I don't want to get in trouble with it, but with a civil fine, you have no recourse. If you have a person that gets fined one hundred dollars for something and they decide not to pay it, you can't put him in jail, you can't issue a bench warrant, you can't force him to pay.
Yeah, that's the downside, that's the negative side.
That's the downside of it.
So your neighbor who's not doing the right thing, do what they want, and you, we have no teeth in the fight.
But still, with a civil...
Then we get a complaint.
You're whoever, whoever is, uh, is sitting on that bench at the time, if it gets to that point, does that person not have the discretion somewhere in the fine, in the structure of that fine?
Not make them. Or he doesn't come, or even if he shows up and says, I can't pay it, you can't force him to pay it.
Isn't the only thing that you can do is put a lien on their property?
Right, I mean, you could go civil.
Yeah, you have to do a lien on their property, you don't have recourse you have. But maybe there's an in-between here in that...
You know, if they're renters, you got nothing to place a lien on.
Is it all or none? Is it even a carry? Is it all or none?
Well, personally, it's fine, otherwise it's just...
Is it all between civil? Or could you have some that would be considered criminal that we would all, you know, like, I don't know. In this state, littering is a criminal offense. Okay, so I don't know what's less than littering, but trash in the yard, we don't want anything to charge a thousand eighty-seven. Can you get that under civil?
Frank, can I add something to this?
Yeah, please.
I think that the town of Irma Police Department, I don't have the numbers in front of me, uh, we, we did like a thousand something abatement notices for problems in the town last year, and that was given out in the year we were in court. I think we wrote thirty-five tickets. So, I mean, you're looking at, divide thirty-five into a thousand something. So we've got over ninety-nine percent compliance when we go to somebody's house and say, please fix your items. We don't, guys, we don't go out and just write tickets. We give everyone a lot of time. I'm sorry about the guy with the, with the tire deal, uh, but, you know, I don't, I don't know the circumstances behind that. I don't even know. Uh, but, you know, we have over ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent compliance.
So maybe we're trying to solve a problem, a solution to a problem that doesn't exist?
I know Jeff, if you come to his quote, a thousand dollar ticket, you have a reason or when you come here to plead, I can't remember the last time you charged anybody a full one thousand dollars. He reduces them ninety-five percent of the time that I'm aware of.
Well, I heard one quote not too long ago, last, late last year, he reduced it to two thirty-five, and I don't know where that number comes from, but he said he couldn't reduce it any lower than that. There was some technical reason. You know, I'm sure you've heard that over and over, Frank.
Yeah, well, I, I'm not really sure. That's going to be a court...
Yeah. There's some explanation.
Yeah, there's going to be a court explanation.
I, I can offer some insight into that. The state has mandatory fees and assessments that are assessed to every ticket that's written, regardless of the fine amount that the municipality collects. The state still wants their dollar for this or their two dollars for that. There's a schedule for that, and the town has to remit that, which is why there has to be a floor. If he doesn't, if he goes below the floor, then the town actually loses money on that transaction.
So that, that's, that's the minimum number that the state adds whatever it wants. Right, for every ticket that's written? Yeah, yeah.
Okay, let's, let's go back, let's get back on course here. So we have a problem with our, our fee structure, is what I'm hearing from y'all. And we think we might have a way to fix that by going to civil structure for some of the fines and some of the fines, maybe leave them as they are, as, as criminal, is that what it is?
Can we do, is it all or none? Does anyone know?
No, no, you can split it up.
You can split it up, I'm sure. So, again, we're going to take this information back to the council and hopefully work on these things. What about, what about, uh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You introduced a proposal to have a committee of people who would look these things over?
Right.
In that window. Doesn't that seem like a reasonable, if the guy gets a ticket and he, he could come to a committee, you know, and it goes beyond just writing the tickets, you're close to the heart of that woman with the, uh, car court in her yard. There, there has to be a group of citizens who come together and say, is this reasonable or is this not reasonable?
An ombudsman type of a group? Yeah.
It's already mandated by state law. Is it what? You already have that structure of the appeals process?
No, no, we're talking about an ombudsman group that they could come to.
Talking about the car court issue.
No, no, well, I mean, for appeals, for zoning stuff, I'm talking about, what I hear you saying is a ombudsman group that they could come to.
A group of six or seven responsible citizens?
Mm-hmm.
Who say, we got this committee, be it the zoning board, be it whatever it is, they're, they're being unreasonable. And let's talk to them. But put the citizen a, against a, I'm not going to budge an inch group of people, it isn't a way to run a, a government.
Well, we have jury trials. They can ask for a jury trial and have six citizens or come to court, a jury trial. They can ask for a jury trial with any ticket. And six nice people at the town of Irma can vote on whether they are guilty or not. We do have that.
Gee, I'm going to have to go hire a lawyer and I'm going to, I'm going to spend ten thousand dollars to find out.
As a matter of fact, we'll give you a lawyer for free now. If you meet a circumstance.
Yeah.
So you're welcome. And it's costing the taxpayers for us to do that. So, I'm just letting you know. You can get a free lawyer if you meet a requirement.
Well, yeah, the requirement you don't have anymore.
Uh, that pretty much everybody gets a lawyer, from what I'm understanding now, it's really, I mean, unless you're a millionaire. Unless you're a millionaire and your house is only worth two thousand dollars, you're probably going to get a lawyer.
So how about the little lady with the car court? If she took it to court, is she going to get a free lawyer?
She could, maybe.
She wasn't charged with any crimes.
Yeah.
The crime was against her.
I don't even think we even remember a ticket.
Okay, wait a minute, wait, let's, let's, let's stay on track. I got six minutes for a subject here. One of the things... Okay, one of... Hold on a second. One of the things that I wanted to also talk about...
I'm interested in the mayor of that issue probably more than anybody in this town.
Okay, can we stay on subject here for a minute, please? Alright. In that same subject area, we talked about a committee or a group of people to help with some of the things that, from the dilapidated housing ordinance that we might get fined for, a group of people will go around and help fix these things for folks. Um, an example, you know, I'm medically deprived, I'm sick, I can't go out and cut my grass. If my grass gets higher than six inches, I get a, potentially get a citation for a thousand eighty-seven dollars from the town to cut my grass. Alright? Can I call on somebody to come and cut my grass for me? And pay them money? Or can a kid come by and knock on my door and say, hey, Mr. Walker, I'll cut your grass for you for ten bucks? Well, no, you can't, because that's peddling, that's against the law, that's soliciting, that's against the law. You can't, can't do it right now. But could we put together some kind of a group of citizens to help with that sort of stuff? Is that something anybody's interested in working on or? I, I mean, that's just some of the things that was thrown at me.
Can the churches get involved in that?
Absolutely.
Barry, did we, and we did dilapidated, I believe, you strongly and rightfully made it a point in your discussion of dilapidated, that these committees needed to exist. And there was some resolution to your request?
Mm-hmm.
That there was going to be a list or something? So, I'm, what I'm asking is, did this already exist or is it just somewhere that it's not being utilized or where do we stand?
Again, this is for, information for the people to understand that there is a list, there is a way to do that, but is there a formal process for people to do that sort of stuff? You know?
That's the problem today. Nobody gives, pardon my French, a damn about their neighbors anymore. When I grew up, if you had a problem in your yard, three people showed up to help you out. Uh, there's a lady across the street from me that's bent over from back surgeries and whatever, and I've got three people helping her right now, including me, get her house in order so she can sell it and move in with her son. Uh, she was approached by some real estate people that, and I don't, I don't know who they were, but they, well, we'll give you money right now. And I said, my God, that house is worth more than that. And she finally saw through them and, uh, Kathy always talks about her friend, well, he's my friend too. So Danny Hood went to see her. And she knew Danny from when she used to do exterminating work for some company, she used to do his termite letters. And that's being taken care of. I think I'm a good neighbor personally. I have a neighbor that's not a good neighbor that I had to sue in a previous incident because he wasn't following the town's code and town's laws. And I won't go any further with that. And thirty-five hundred dollars later, he did what I asked him to do from the very start, but, uh, it cost me, it cost him.
I don't know who put this suggestion in, Barry, but from what you originally proposed and what this person, whoever put that on your list, is not functioning. The information about who's available to do this is, is not getting to the individual people.
Okay.
So, and I don't know if you can fix it, but I think it's a legitimate point. Um, but I, but I, I would add something is that there's two people on my street who cut a lot of people's grass. But not including the guy across the street who threatened to kill me if I cut his grass. So, you know.
Well, one of the, those neighbors...
All kinds of issues.
One of those neighbors passed away recently, Skidmore.
Gee, is there a, is there a way that we could incorporate when these abatement notices are given out, that if there is an issue, I, I don't know what your process is, so maybe you're already doing it, but whatever that process is, could your people writing the abatement notices, being, being kind of proactive and offering other solutions?
We offer, we, like I said, we, we wrote a thousand something abatement notice and wrote thirty-five tickets. I mean, it was, we, I like to say the guys at the terminal police department do cut and force and do a great job looking after the people in the town because they are the people in the town. Two of them live in town, I live in town. So, I mean, I grew up in this community, I went to my school, so I have a, I have a connection to the, to the town and people. But, uh, yeah, we, we do whatever we can to help. I mean, we're not going to go get a lawnmower and cut somebody's lawn. Um, one of the guys wanted to do that, and I said, that's not a great idea, you do that Um, one of the guys wanted to do that and I said, that's not a great idea, you do that for him, you're destroying everybody. Uh, but, so, um, yeah, we're, we're people, we feel your pain. I got a lawn mower going crank sometimes and it stinks, you know? It air the tire every time, the left front tire was gonna flat. But, uh, we do, we do above and beyond what I think we need to do to help people. And like Mister Brown said, when somebody comes to court, other than the illicit discharges that we had, the five, I don't know if anyone's ever been fined a thousand eighty-seven fifty for a, a tire or anything or
A code violation.
or a code violation like that. Now, they have for assaulting an officer, we have downwritings for discharging firearms, uh, dogs biting people, stuff like that. Now, they will get a thousand dollar ticket probably for that. But as far as a high grass, I don't think we've ever issued a thousand dollar ticket for someone with high grass. I mean, it would be, that would be mad if we did.
Well, let me make a suggestion. Why not just call a meeting of all, identify all the pastors of all the churches in town and, and organize a meeting for them to come here at one same place at the same time and ask them to reach out to their membership and say, can we get a list together or a, a central number to call? If some citizen needs help, somebody in our church can help them.
We have all that. I mean, code enforcement officers do give the list out if they know the person has an issue and can't do it themselves. Okay, well, they have a list, we've got like ten churches on the list, but I'm not sure they've actually been able to help anybody yet. When it comes to put the gutter up, they're not gonna climb up on a ladder, anything that could get somebody hurt.
Well, but cut the grass, I'd go.
Okay, okay.
Well, I can tell you that my church, Eastlake, goes out in the community and does fix things. Will fix, will fix gutters, will fix shutters, will fix all of that. And, and there are many churches that would, um, go out there. All you have to do is ask and, and it'll happen.
Well, okay, so, but we have, we have the vehicle, we have the list, it's available from town hall if somebody should need it. Question is, we need to make sure that's getting disseminated, yes.
Put a link on your website so that, some people are embarrassed, they don't wanna ask for help.
Right.
Put a link on your website so that, kind of, not anonymous, but they don't have to go through a bunch of people to get help, but commit contact with somebody. It's so embarrassing.
Okay.
You bring up a good point. I actually think that many of the problems in not just this town, but every town is getting the information out. And that's really the big problem of any town.
Mm-hmm.
Is making sure the people have the same information that the ones who are making decisions have. And if we can solve that by updating the website more often.
Yeah, gotcha. You mentioned about dogs and that's the next subject I wanna talk about, enforcing, resisting animal laws. Dogs barking at night, dogs chained up twenty-four seven, stray cats running around. Um, we have laws in our town for animals, but somebody posted that we need to enforce that stuff, so what are your thoughts on that? Barking all night, we got ordinances on that, right, chief?
There was a guy posted last night.
Yeah, exactly. Three thirty in the morning.
I don't think that's the neighborhood of town, it's a crazy thing.
But we don't have animal control in Irma.
No, no, not, not animal control.
Richland and Lexington County.
We're talking about dogs barking annoyance, that's.
It's howling, but, yeah.
Yeah.
Is that what it's called, howling?
Howling.
Okay.
Animal. No, there's a howling statute.
There's a howling statute.
They're barking and not howling.
Well, we have to say they're howling in court or we lose the case.
Richland County will tell you, uh, if you have a dog that barks, uh, is that dog a watchdog? And that kills it right there.
Well, this dog, you sound like a watchdog, it sounded like a poodle it was being annoying. I mean, I'm just saying that what I heard last night, but we have laws, is what I'm getting at, chief, right? And if it's three thirty in the morning, this guy is being woke by a dog and, you know, barking his head off, call IPD.
IPD calls, we'll go out.
Okay.
We update them the first time, we knock on the door.
Right.
For the abatement notice to cease the, the, the dog barking.
Right.
If it continues again, we can cite them a ticket. And normally, how we do that is through complaints from the neighbors. I.e., we don't go around the community with our windows down looking for dogs barking. I, I'm just gonna say that, okay? If, if there's a dog barking, we're not gonna stop out and knock on your door, hey, your dog's barking. No, we're gonna wait for you, for the neighbors to say, this is a nuisance to us, and we'll say, we'll handle the nuisance.
Chief, I remember Sergeant Dale's report the other night about how many dogs there were.
One dog bark, howling, and one, uh, dog running at large.
And that was one?
Yeah, and one, yeah. And what, it wasn't too bad.
So it's really a question of, they just need to call?
Yes. And we don't want nine-one-one to be called.
Yeah, I, thanks.
Wait a minute now.
I mean, you can.
Who, who are you gonna call at three thirty in the morning? At three thirty in the morning?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's people many, or just back center all the time.
Oh, okay. I mean, nine-one-one.
Nine-one-one emergency.
Yeah, nine-one-one is what somebody would call, I mean. Okay.
It's just, uh, you know, they'll say, okay, here, next time, call this number.
Okay.
It's a dog barking.
Well. All right, is that number on our website published? In big letters, is it?
And then when you call the dis- if you call the police department after hours, it sends you a recording that says, please call eight oh three, seven eight five, twenty-five, twenty-one, which is the Lexington County Communications Center.
I know we're skipping ahead on the list, but there's an issue with that as well.
Yeah.
Then you get the runaround with which dispatch center handles the call.
All right.
Me working in public service, I know and I've told the dispatcher on the phone who needs to handle it and it doesn't matter, you still get the runaround. By the time that happens, people just give up because they think it's a joke.
Let, well, unfortunately for the town of Irma, we are very unique in a lot of ways, and one of them is, we're in Lexington and Richland County.
That's correct.
Um, I will tell you that I deal with both sheriffs. If I went to every meeting that Lexington and Richland County had, I would never be at my desk. I'll tell you that right now. Uh, so, um, that, yeah, that is something we have to deal with.
Yeah.
Being in, being in Irma. And here, it's not just one person, it's everybody. We all deal with the same thing.
But sometimes the matter is, it's of the essence and we need a.
Absolutely.
The shooting we had online, the gunshot, it was down. I don't remember the pride, but I guess Tony Trump.
Yes.
We needed them there.
And I, I heard the nine-one-one call on that. It's very frustrating.
I was, they were, they were driving out, stopped, they stopped in front of my house, I was totally broke out.
Yes, we, we got that call and we, we looked over it.
Okay, so.
They tried to transfer me, right?
Yeah, they, they were transferring from Lexington to Richland and somebody said, that's Irma and.
Yeah, that's.
So that's Richland and, uh, the dispatches were orange. It's, that, that's not good. You're just like, give me somebody, send me somebody.
Yeah, that's crazy, that, and we need, we need to, we need to work on that as, I think, as a council, as a town. We need to work on that because there's gotta be a way to identify somebody who's calling in distress a lot quicker.
You, you're talking.
Half million dollars.
We looked into that about two years ago.
Yeah, we looked into that already.
Got two, three million dollars.
Well, that's, that's to get a whole call center, but there's gotta be a way.
That's gotta be arranged with a liaison from both counties there. It's gotta be a meeting or a series of meetings to handle that.
Yes. Yeah. Hold on a sec, hold on a sec, one second, yeah.
I think most adults in this town know what county they live in because when they move here, they gotta go register, they gotta put their kids in school. If they don't know what county they're in, then you've got a bigger problem than we think, than we think we had.
That's not a safe bet.
Know what county they are in and they call the dispatcher and they say, please give me the dispatcher for Richland County. And if you guys wanna put it on your website, if you live in Richland County, call this number. If you live in Lexington, call this number.
That's not easy to ask.
It's the same dispatch for both.
Dispatch, dispatcher, everybody.
Dispatcher tells you who you need to talk to. Well, if you tell dispatcher, I'm not in that county.
They don't care, they will transfer you automatically.
That the police chief has to work on with the county's sheriff, correct?
There's only one dispatcher for both counties.
Let me, let me explain.
After hours.
Let me explain how this works. Uh, if you live in either Lexington or Richland County and you need the police, they will send you to Lexington County Dispatch. That's the dispatch's force. Either you're in Richland County. If you need an ambulance, that depends on which county they live in, as to what dispatcher you're gonna talk to. Uh, which is kinda strange, but, um, Lexington County EMS won't go to Richland County, Richland County EMS won't go to Lexington County. But if you need a police officer in Richland County, it has to go to Lexington County Dispatch for us to dispatch us. I wish it were easier, I really do. Um, you know, Leon Ross talked to me about us coming to Richland County Dispatch. I don't know what that would entail. But, I don't know, I don't know if Richland County Dispatch is any better than that. What's that, sir?
How hard is it just to have a full-time person twenty-four seven here? Or take four people with one phone up here and, and, we say, where the police have to go?
You talking about manning a nine-one-one station?
Uh, we call it, it, on dispatch, how, how hard is it?
We have a nine, we have a dispatch service for non-nine-one-one service, which is Lexington County Communications.
I'm talking about one here, at the city hall somewhere, where the, where the, you each have to come in and report to. I'm sure they have somewhere, they have an officer.
Well, I mean, yeah, we have a, we have a police department.
Right, and, well, I don't, we don't just have a full-time person there, twenty-four seven, one number. We have emergency.
Money.
I mean, if you want to somebody's right on the county line from, let's say, down by the C-mart or the Walgreen on Lake Murray Boulevard, if they call and they end up getting our dispatch, but they're in the county, we can't really think about it, we'd still have to switch modes. If you call nine-one-one, it's gonna go to Lexington, Richland County.
I know, I've called, I mean, it's not on my home.
I know, then when you call.
Dispatch number here.
Right, I don't know if everyone would know our number, they could look it up online, they could look it up online.
He's asking about having the in-house IPD dispatchers in your building, the dispatcher for your guys in our county.
It's, it would just cost money and resources. I mean, we could throw money at everything and we can fix it, if that's what the community.
Six million dollars.
No, it's not, I don't think it'll be six, I don't think it'd be six million dollars, but.
It's two million plus, we worked it out.
Yeah.
Two million.
That's good information.
To set up. To set up, right.
Do we need to set up plus payroll after that hour?
But then, you're, you're talking about zero to two million, you're talking about the nine-one-one center.
To set up our own nine-one-one.
That's not what he's talking about, he's saying, he's saying have a person there answer the phone. Yeah.
Four hours a day.
Or police station.
Well, yeah, he's still referring to that, to make call nine-one-one, that he would want it to happen. I think he's just saying the problem.
Wade, excuse me, excuse me, Wade, say that again, please, so we're clear about it and make sure we understand.
Irma Police Station, have a person there, dispatch person. Not a nine-one-one, but a Irma emergency number that we can call. Nine-one-one, whatever the number is.
A non-emergency number.
A non-emergency, something like a barking dog or whatever. But, but even if it was an emergency, you called there, wouldn't that be quicker than trying to call nine-one-one, they don't know where to go?
We don't have a recorded line at the police department. There are a lot of things that we would have to do. Uh, and, and again, you're looking at.
Probably be quicker.
And, and again, you're looking at, yeah, you, you might be right, you would get service quicker probably, more than likely, I would think, if you called the police department. And they on the radio say, hey, someone had to one, two, three Main Street, there was a barking dog. You, you're right, absolutely. But I don't know what that would entail money-wise, but if the dispatcher, say, two dispatchers quit, now we're taking two officers off the street to man, you know, you're gonna get. I worked at West Columbus Police Department and nothing against West Columbus Police Department, I love the West Columbus Police Department, they started me out as a law officer. Uh, but when the dispatcher was sick, uh, their kid was sick or some, I had, we manned the police department, I had to take the guy off the street to man the nine-one-one. Department, the station on it, we had to man that. So that took a person off the street to man that phone line.
It, it would take four people to that.
It would take four people and then a probably, yeah, four people, but that's twelve-hour rotations too, so. Try to find someone who wants to work a twelve-hour rotation on the phone, it's tough. I can't even find, uh, a lot of police officers, guys who wanna work police work.
All right, good, yes.
But it's a good question, it's a good question.
Right, yeah.
Two, two comments. One, there may be a new technological solution that would allow your officers to be able to be out working and make this work, I don't know, I'm just, that thought on the table. The second comment is, Barry, out of all that we've talked about so far, and I assume the rest, this is the most important issue that I've heard. And that's how I feel about this, this is very important, this is what I would like to go with.
Public safety for a town is the number one thing, y'all agree?
Yes.
Yes.
You call the police department, if you live in a town, why do you live in the town of Irma? You don't live in the county, you live in a town of Irma for public safety, right? And the last thing you want is no one being there.
Yeah, we want, we want better police protection than we think we would get in the county.
I want, I want police protection and fire protection, that's what I want.
And, and that's what, that's what.
And I hear sirens all the time with the fire, well, I know they're.
And, and that's why I think this is the most important, this needs to run absolutely the best it can and everything else is not to talk about, but this is. Well, you know, I, I got another idea on that call. If we have a phone number here, whoever, whoever's on ship, that, uh, police officer's here. You have that phone number forward to a cell phone. So if he carries whoever, whoever's being supervised on ship, you carry that cell phone and the phone call will come to him. You wouldn't have to have somebody sitting around there waiting. You can have that one cell phone dedicated, have that number forward, that cell, whoever's on ship gets that phone and they, they call it in forward to it. You wouldn't have to have anybody.
Well, again, uh, in theory.
Sounds terrible.
Sounds good. Uh, but I don't know what that supervisor's gonna be doing at two o'clock in the morning, he might go in a, a, a armed robbery or a shooting, and, and the phone rings, he ain't got time to answer. You know, if you want someone designated for. Yeah, I mean, you know, that is a great alternative, I just don't know what, you know, you might be that person calling at that time going, where, why aren't they answering the phone?
Again, yeah, again, that's the issue we're gonna have to work on as a council, and that's what I'm hearing y'all say. This is a very important issue, this is something we want you to work on, and I got it on here. In-house, non-emergency number, yeah.
I think that the, the problem that we face in this town is that we don't realize that this is not a full service to this town. Because we do pay for our police, we pay for our administration, um, a few other things, there are staff positions, but we don't pay for a lot of things that are provided to us by the county. And unless we are in a position, if this is what we truly believe, we want the town to provide, unless we are in a position to put some money on the line, we're not gonna get much of a response because these guys sitting up here can only give us so much based on what money's available. And they can go out and they can try to find grants, they can try to find some pot of money from someplace hidden in the state treasury someplace and try to pay something for a one or two-year grant, but what happens after that? If they wanna try and put in a dispatcher or a, or a two-eleven or a three-eleven person to answer the phone and relay the messages to somebody else not, not sitting in that building, the startup costs might can be funded by a grant.
Yeah, but Wade said.
Having that, what do we have that's gonna be able to sustain that?
And I understand that, but Wade gave a suggestion of having somebody with a cellphone forward to, that number forward to a cellphone. It's a lot cheaper than putting a whole nine-one-one center up. And again, that's something we would have to work on as a council to come up with a solution, whether it's funded or not.
I'm assuming that we have a nine-one-one system because we're already paying for that.
Right.
But we're not saying you live in a nine-one-one system, you still got it.
We still have it.
We have it, but why you can't do nine-one-one? You need a, you need, you need.
But we have the three-one-one number and the two-one-one, they're in all big, big towns, they're in all big cities. It's to handle things like potholes, it's to handle things like barking dogs.
Do we have a three-one-one syst- we don't have a three-one-one number here? Yeah, okay. All right, well, yes, yeah.
Issues like potholes and, uh, things like that can be handled, trade money to Friday, nine to five. And about two years ago, I suggested, and I went down to the previous chief, that the town look into getting its own in-house dispatcher, so whether you call nine-one-one or the non-emergency number, an in-house Irma Police Department employee answers the call and dispatches the call from a radio in Irma Police Headquarters.
Okay.
And, uh, I, I, as former law enforcement officer, I'm pretty familiar with the, the nuances of this. This is really a pretty complicated issue that becomes even more complicated by the fact that the chief pointed out that we're in two different counties. But, uh, I sat down with the chief then and we talked about it and, and I knew right then, I said, when I made the proposal, it would neither be cheap, easy nor fast to do this. And then on the subsequent day, I went out to the Lexington County Communication Center just outside Lexington on Ball Park Road and met with the Lexington County Administrator and the director of the communication center out there and got a tour. And we spent about three hours out there and got a tour of the whole place. And we sat down and talked about the nuts and bolts on this. And at the end of the day, it's gonna cost the town a whole lot of money to do that and it, it's very problematic. And another dynamic about this issue that people don't understand is due to the proliferation of cell phones. When you call nine-one-one. When you call nine-one-one, the sys- depending on which cell tower you hit, you may, you could stand here and call nine-one-one and you may get a Lexington County cell tower, you stand over there, you may get a Richland County cell tower, and you get a, depending on which cell tower you hit, it's gonna go to one of the respective dispatchers. Back before the proliferation of cell phones, when everybody had a landline in their house, like I still have, you pick up the phone and dial nine-one-one, the dispatcher immediately sees on the screen your name, the address where your phone is, and your phone number. They don't get that so much now with, with the cell phone, there's no address, so you have to tell them where you are, and if you're in Lexington County and you get the Richland County dispatcher, they've got to figure that out.
And Georgia tell you, if you call dispatch, and, and I, hats off to them, they have a tough job, but they want your life story.
Oh, they, they, they do, like, they, they-
They ask you a lot of questions before they dispatch an officer.
It's a liability.
When I listen to the nine-one-one call, uh, you know, I think y'all, I think they're on the dispatch, they were talking dispatch like two or three minutes before they dispatched the police officer. And that's a shootout, and we're talking, it's a long time to be sitting there listening to them.
One, one of the horror stories that made me look into this was there was a woman who needed help at the, in front of the Kroger in Irma. And she calls nine-one-one, she gets the Lexington County dispatcher, who's the correct dispatcher for these guys, and she's, they ask where she is, she says, I'm at the Kroger in downtown Irma.
Where's that?
What's the address? She doesn't know what the address is, you know, every police officer in this town could find the Irma Kroger blindfolded. And the dispatcher had to have the street address, cause there's a little screen, got a little box on the screen, by God, that's gotta be filled in before he can send it off.
Now, understand dispatchers in Lexington County, they may don't, they probably don't even know anything about Irma.
Some of them have not ever been here.
So, you, you're talking, if you had a local dispatching unit, which has cost us a lot of money to do, guys, and this is not cheap, but if we did that, then yes. If someone said, I'm at Kroger, okay, great, I gotta get you on the way, we know where Kroger is, everybody knows where it is.
That's what inspired me to look into this.
Yes, sir.
Do they not, do they not have, like, GoBots?
They need an address.
That's, that's what they do.
They did, they need an Irma per- it'd be great if they knew a little bit about Irma, but understand Lexington County dispatch, when you go tour there, they have Lexington County, Irma, uh, Chapin-
Leesville.
Uh, Leesville, Gaston, Gillian, Swansea, I'm not done, I mean, I'm just saying, so when you call them and you're like, hey, I need a police officer, what county, where are you at, and give me an address.
Airport.
Well, I'm at the Kroger in Irma, well, I don't know-
Where's that?
And matter of fact, I never heard of Irma, where are you at now? Cause I mean, guys, think about it, these dispatchers-
They have some kind of intense training, if they're gonna, if they're gonna man the Irma port, or whatever port.
These dispatchers are dispatch-
That's-
They have some kind of intense training or major places.
George knows this, these guys are dispatching nine, ten agencies.
At one time, that's why even what Wade says even sounds even better to have our own person or way to have it manned in our town.
Just know it costs a lot of money, guys.
Well, I'm not saying we got, we're unlimited resources, but we gotta work on that as a council, you know.
Could, could we have maybe somebody from the nine-one-one center come out and talk to us?
They've been here before, we'll probably get back, Nikki Rogers is the chief over there, I mean, I could, I could shoot you email out to her and see if she'll come to a council meeting. But, I mean, she's gonna tell you the same thing that every, uh, government, law enforcement agency or dispatcher's gonna tell you. If you get Mr. Smith working that night, you get Mr. Smith, if you get Mrs. Austin Jam, you get Mrs. Austin Jam, you know, so, I mean.
Somebody who's good with flow charts, names and coordinates, those folks have come up with a plan, it's, it's, it's a-
But if you went out there, oh, it looks pretty, they got three nice big screens, laptops, it's a five million-
Yeah, all this is, all this is definitely doable, it just, again, that's, I'm hearing y'all say that's what you want us to be working on. It's not, well, a council, I'm saying a council, us. Look, let me get back on, on track here a little bit, sewer system backups at H.E. Corley and the rec center.
Why is that hap- educate us, why is that happening?
Exactly, that's exactly the crest, the reason, we found out that some people in town didn't have sewer service, and they're subsequently been dumping raw sewage out on the streets. Now, why is this a backup at H.E. Corley and the rec center? I'm not sure, but there's definitely an order, order being disseminated from that area.
Could that be the sewer plant that we have off of, uh, Irma Drive?
Drive?
It's nowhere close to that.
Well, the wind's right, you'll be surprised what carries in the wind.
That, that's the complete opposite end of Chadford Road.
Yeah.
That's where the sewer plant is, is on the shore of Chadford.
Well, Director Klein, he went out there, Director Klein, he's went out there and investigated this thing.
I've, I've walked the entire ditch area, the sewer line out there, I've never seen a leak in their system, never.
And you know they're paying their bill.
Kids, kids just can't start to know.
And keep in mind with the sewer system, you get an incredible flow of sewage in the morning, for obvious reasons, I won't get into all that. Right, in any sewer system, you've got sewer gas. And, you know, all those kids get to school, they start flushing, you got a lot of flow, and the flow's gonna push the air out of the manhole covers, that's just the way it is. It's, maybe it's an infrastructure problem with the sewer service provider.
Could be that too.
What they need Carolina water.
Yeah, is that, are they on city sewer there?
Yeah, yeah, Carolina.
That's on Carolina.
Not the city, but, uh, Carolina Water Service, okay. But I have, I've walked that area, there's not a sewer leak in that area, I'm aware of. I'm guessing their system can't handle the, the demand then. It's not, Barry's calling it a backup, I don't know that it's backed up into a school or the rec center, I think he's referring to the sewer gas smell. And any or anything's a county issue. Not a county issue. It's not? It's Carolina Water.
Water service, yes.
We went to a meeting yesterday that Carolina Water had, had some shows to raise cane about the, the, um, lights increase and also the little sticker they stuck on my door. Um, I had, I had put in a complaint with the, um, regulatory commission over there, they came, I had five people at my house this morning checking out my property, with, uh, with one of the guys from the, from the, uh, Carol, or utilities and whatever. And I guess they were driving around and they were checking out, and I didn't know who they were, so I told them to get off my property, but I knew who they were, and I come to find out that's who it was, from the complaint that I put in. And that was last Monday, they, they were completely quit.
So, could you tell everybody about the situation where the lines run all over your property and everybody else's property, it's not like, it's not- Cause somebody was talking about, they came on their property and-
Yeah.
The line goes from here for this house, but it goes over here to this property, and they were digging up this person's property to fix this person's sewer problem.
They're not paying, they're not finding out who's moving out, who's moving in, so they're waiting, I've been in there since two thousand eleven, they just told me February ninth that I needed to hook up with them.
And there's never been any, there's never been any blocking of the sewage or anything, that we've had continual flow. It's going to, into their systems.
Never capped.
There's no, there's no cap, there was never any balloon or anything put in the line, it was, that house was lost.
And they just found it, February ninth, probably because of the stuff down there.
That's a question. Let, let me, let me explain what they do. When you quit paying the bill, they send you a certified letter, not once but twice in fourteen days, these are all state rolls from the Public Service Commission. You receive those letters, then they come out, put one of those stickers like they, I'm assuming they did at your house, on the front door, and that's where they put it, right?
Yeah.
It's bright pink color.
Orange.
Orange, so you can't miss it, yeah, that's it, you can't miss it. So you know your service is gonna be turned off, so whoever was living in your house in two thousand eleven did all that.
It was foreclosure, so they, they just walked away.
Well, but still, that was all done, Carolina's Water Service turned off service to that house. There should have been one of their employees go out there and put a plug in the, in the drain.
Panting nail.
They didn't do it. But when they cut your service off, they quit sending a bill to that address, they wait for you to call them to get the service going again.
I think my house just got lost.
But how many people don't know that they have two services?
Probably a lot.
They're three.
Exactly, so when you move in-
Three.
Well, three, when you, when you buy a house, um, maybe that is, I've talked to at least-
Part of the welcome.
At least, yes. Here's your ceiling company. A lot of people, when we bought our house, I came from Casey, we didn't have different companies, we had one company. So, to, for us, you know, we have two, we have two, we have two or whatever, but, um, we don't have utilities.
Where, are you in Old Friars Gate?
We're up here, right.
Okay, well, you've got Richland County Sewer-
Right.
And City of Columbia Water, when, when I first moved there in eighty-six, we weren't even in the town of Irma yet. We voted that, no, I moved in there in April of eighty-six, we voted in November to become part of the town. City of Columbia builds you for your water and builds you for your sewer, because they knew how much water was coming in, and the same amount of water must be going out, even if you had a sprinkler system or whatever else. Now, we are on Richland County and we pay every three months a sewer bill, and we pay water to, to Columbia. Some houses have sewer service from Columbia and water from Columbia, and then there's Carolina that provides sewer and water, and sometimes it's just water and somebody, and City of Columbia provides sewer.
Believe me, I've known that, had a realtor not walk through-
Well, see, that's, that's one thing I was gonna bring up, no disrespect to our, our present realtor here, but, uh, I had a good realtor when I bought my house, uh, and he explained everything about you need to notify because the wa- the City of Columbia, the, the water meter is in the owner's name. If you rent a house out in the, in the town of Irma, the mo- the meter is in the owner's name. The renter has to call the City of Columbia and say, I'm renting this house on whatever street, uh, please send the bill to this address to me. If that person skips out, the owner gets the bill. Uh, when I was at this meeting and talked with Catherine Templeton, that's running for ma- governor, that used to be with DHEC, she said with, that, uh, somehow the, the providers of services need to notify the town when they cut off somebody's water or cut off somebody's sewer, and they need to talk to each other. Cause if this company cuts off the sewer and this company's still giving them water, they're still flushing. So, I mean, well, I pay my water bill, well, that's nice, but you're not paying your sewer bill, so we're not gonna let you have water if you can't get it out of your house. That's the point, there needs, they need, the legislature needs to be something, and I've talked with, with Chip Huggins and Nathan Valentine, and I said, y'all, y'all need to do something in the legislature, because we've had a problem crop up in Irma that, I hate to say it, but it doesn't smell real good. And last night at the, at the meeting, went at the, uh, courtroom, Judge Adams, after she finished dealing with those sewer problems, she said, I'm going home and take shower, cause I mean, one of the houses is really, I mean, the, the person was covering up their yard with lumber just so they could walk in the yard, and one was cut out underneath the house, and it was being contained by the foundation of the house.
Oh my God.
One-
And they should be punished, but, I mean, for the O two-
Well, one of the houses-
I have no clue that-
One of the houses was a rental house, and when the owner was contacted about the problem, well, I haven't been in that house in five years.
And that's a problem.
That- Exactly, exactly. We-
All five have been fixed also.
They're fixed now.
All five have been fixed, so.
In fact, we even had an interpreter for the Laotian couple that didn't know about sewer.
Let's, let's talk about, while we're talking about drainage and sewage, talk to some, it was said to us also on the website that we don't have a street sweeping program on a regular basis, that the drains need to be cleaned and maintained, the dishes, the creeks behind our houses, and Friars Gate especially, need to be cleaned out on a regular basis. And, um, again, the city's not responsible for that, but should we be? Question.
No, they shouldn't be.
Okay.
The owner, whoever owns that property needs to be held accountable.
Alright, but remember now, if they don't clean that, for instance, they don't clean that creek out in the back, when you have heavy rain, it backs up, we got flooding problems all over.
You're exactly right.
Wherever.
The damages that are caused by that needs to fall heavy on the owner of that property that negligently cares about it.
How do you prove?
How do you prove that?
Prove that or-
Yeah, how do you prove that?
Responsible in the county, who do the streets sweep? Is it the county's responsibility?
They have no responsibility. Once bef- when I first came on council in, eh, in two thousand fifteen, there was some discussion about the town buying one of these pieces of equipment to sweep the streets, and I forget what it was, two hundred and something thousand dollars. Yeah, three hundred thousand dollars for this machine and train somebody to operate it and pay them, and Lexington County gracefully, when we have the Okra strut, they send theirs over here, and they do Lake Murray Boulevard, or did do Lake Murray Boulevard, I don't know if they're still doing that for us. And the, the guy with Lexington Maintenance says it stays in the shop more than it stays on the street. So, it, it's an expensive situation, now, when I cut my grass, I take my mower on the road out to the center of my street and go back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, get any pine straw from my yard, cause I've got pine trees, and get it out of the street, because I want the water to go down the street to the stormwater drained at the end of the street. But, uh, I had a neighbor say, well, what are you picking up the pine cones for? I said, they're coming off of my trees. I said, I'm responsible for it, of course, my neighbor that has the huge giant magnolia tree that never rakes the yard, they blow in my garage, my next door neighbor's garage, and all over my yard, and magnolia leaves don't decompose very well. So, I mean, I'm out there with my little grabber picking them up, cause at seventy-five, I don't, seventy-three, phew, man, I'm wishing I'm seventy-five.
Yes, Brent.
I, I, they don't pick up very well.
This is one of my personal ones, so y'all just have to bear with me. You go down the street, pick any street, any neighborhood, the houses that have the grass cut, it's edged along the edge, there's no trash in the street. You go two hours down, curb is filled with mud and trash, and in summer, the weeds are growing up and, and everything. So the issue is, whose responsibility is it? Is it the homeowner, it's not my property, is it the county? We don't clean any streets anywhere in the county. So, I mean, it's, 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 everybody's standing around looking at each other, okay?
Pointing.
We have roads that haven't been cleaned about twenty-two.
Right, I mean, and, you know, it's, 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 and then, you know, you get a little further, and you say, well, what about the, the drainage ditches, some of them are clogged and everything, it's really bad in some areas, and then it's just spotty everywhere else and everything. It, and then if you wanna take it further, if you, in general, you only own from your water meter down to the street, I mean, it's public property, but yet, you walk-
You pay taxes to the center of the street.
Yeah, you walk on that property, somebody's house, they're gonna tell you to get off of their property, well, it's not their property, but they have to maintain it, and everybody agrees that we're gonna maintain down to the street, but they don't wanna maintain, you know, the rest of it, so I don't know, I mean, it's nasty.
Um, I'm at that cornerstone of Irma where they repave in the streets to get the repairs, so the county will take over responsibility for our streets.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't know if any of you drove through there, they really, really ripped up the entire circle, it was a real nightmare. Um, I went out of town and came back, so the pavement is there, but it's a real nightmare still. One of my neighbors left this on my porch, it's about twenty pictures of the debris that's going into the, um, the drain.
Storm streams.
They have worn a lot of yards, people are pissed off, they pull back in my car, you can see whatever they've done, it's skirted up on my car and all in my, uh, yard, but, uh, whoever done that work-
They're not finished.
Well, they're not done, they got about-
They got three more weeks to go.
Well, we didn't know that, because no one has-
I didn't know it either, and I went out there and talked with one of the workers, and I said, I've been reading all this on Facebook.
People are asking me, and I'm like, I just got back in town, I'm, I, was, I, I don't know if they were finished either, because I'm like, whatever, it's horrible. But the issue is, all of this stuff, this gravel and rocks and whatever this black citizen is going into the drains, and, um, is it my responsibility to clean my drain? Cause I don't know, I mean, who's-
They're supposed to clean up every, they're supposed to put everything back the way it was, before they leave.
Okay, who's responsible to clean that drain up?
Yeah, well, who's, I mean, I, I keep it clean basically, but I, is it my responsibility to go out there and scoop all of that stuff out?
They will have all this cleaned when they finish, they're not finished.
Okay.
Well, we're talking about, but she's talking about the rocks and gravel on the road, they may not come back and sweep the road, they may not.
Y'all need to look at this, this is insane.
Yeah, it, it, that's, they've got a lot of gravel.
This is insane.
The Tichapaw's gonna be claimed, everything will be inspected by the county, and it will meet their requirements, and they'll do perpetual maintenance on your road. So they're, give them a chance to finish.
And they need to repair my driveway specifically because they busted it up and it wasn't like that.
They would, they have driveways and some curbs that they have to replace, they know that. And specifically it's yours, but they've already replaced a lot of curbs, there was a lot of curbing here, maybe it has been replaced.
Okay, so I'm hearing that it's, it's not the town's responsibility to clean the, the drainage and-
They don't clean our streets. I mean, this is a good opportunity, everybody wants to get involved, this is your opportunity to go out front of your house, blow the, take the- blow the, take the shovel, get rid of the rock or mud or whatever and do your fair share. Cause there's not that big of resources that anybody has to state the county or the town.
In front of your house?
In front of your house.
Okay, but what about on the main thoroughfares? I'm just asking that question.
Did you, uh, the, the actual drain, the drains for the stormwater drains, who made it into that?
County. There is a major ditch that runs from Charring Cross all the way behind my block of Boulder's Lock and it stops at Schilling Ford. And people that live on, live back up to that, they're not sure whether their property line stops before you get to the ditch or it's in the center of the ditch and, uh, ca- the county says it's their ditch. But some of the property owners, when they have a fence here and the ditch is over here, sometimes when they are raking their yards or doing, they throw it over the fence and it goes into the ditch. So, the county comes out and says, where did all this come from? And then they tell us sometimes that, uh, your residents are throwing stuff in the ditch and want us to clean it out. Uh, we had a resident that lived on the corner of Schilling Ford and Charring Cross that gave up when his house was flooded many times. And, uh, he had no sheet rock, anything lower than this in his first floor. Because it, he'd replaced it twice and he quit the last time we had the, 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 what, hundred year flood? Because the water goes through that ditch and then it goes under Schilling Ford to another ditch that goes behind those houses to get to another drain. When we had a meeting with the county, uh, when was that? It was last year. When they had this, this study and we were trying to find out, why can't we get the county and the state DOT to do things? Well, DOT says, we don't have any money. Richland County says, we don't have any money. Well, we sure don't have any money to do it all. And the pipe that feeds from Irma to Richland County, we need a bigger pipe. Okay, so they put a bigger pipe in, then the pipe goes to DOT, guess what? This pipe's bigger than their pipe, so they gotta put a bigger pipe in. Nobody wants to take responsibility for fixing it, but we pay them tax dollars for them to fix it. Uh, I had a elected official with, with the state of South Carolina tell me that Richland County's not getting the widening of Broad River done as they had projected on time six years ago so that we can get a traffic light at Royal Tower like I've been asking for since nineteen eighty-six when I moved here. It's still a problem, but they're only counting left-hand turns. And then this elected official told me that Richland County has misplaced some of that extra penny tax that was going into that project. That's why it's been sidelined. I said, how does the county misplace money? Then I said, I withdraw that question.
Let me add that the town of Irma spent over thirty thousand dollars for a study on that drainage problem because the county said they couldn't do anything till they had a-
Had a study.
So, we spent over thirty thousand dollars, got the study, hard copy bound, signed, sealed, delivered on silver platter, gave it to them and they said, we don't have the money.
Yep. But we proved to them there's a problem.
Can I make a, a request, uh, just kind of throw it out there? A lot of the questions and issues that we're having are, are basically boiling down to whose responsibility is this? Can we get on our website a frequently asked questions list or expand one, if there is one there, for these questions that's searchable? Somebody goes to the town website and searches, you know, who's the fault with, that should be right there available in the frequently asked questions segment on the website.
Well, it's just like the potholes, everybody's com- still complaining about potholes and we don't own the roads. Right, but no, some people just still can't get it.
But I think it would be, it wouldn't take much to at least supply the information, who is responsible?
Sure. A who to call list.
I don't know a lot of the answers to these, but I'm sure there's a lot of people who don't know, like, when you're talking, who's, who's responsible for the drains?
Yeah, who to call list would be nice. I had one when I first bought my house, cause my realtor gave me one.
Alright, and on that subject of streets, we also had people send us emails and saying that there's the lighting on Chadford, Royal Tower, Broad River is not consistent throughout the street. That there's some lights that are out, some, some that are missing, um-
Very easy to address that. Virtually, yeah, every, in every subdivision, all the street lights, it's, from what I can tell, are either maintained and put there by S E and G or Mid Carolina. If you see one that's out of service or broken, you call the respective agency, how do you know which one to do? The S E and G lights have a little oblong silver plaque on it with a pole number. If it doesn't have a pole number on it, it's probably Mid Carolina. I call them all the time about the lights on my subdivision, in Mid Carolina, and they're out there to fix it. The residents paid for that, that's why-
Yeah, we're paying for that.
I guess people don't know, so that's the people that ask questions, take perspective back.
And, and as to potholes, I, I live in Richland County and the roads in my subdivision are maintained by them. If you call the Richland County Ombudsman's office and report a pothole, just give them an address, they're out there within two or three days repairing it. So, so those are easily probably to fix.
I know who knows that.
Nobody knows it.
But you're sharing it with a group of twenty-five people or thousands that live within, within the town.
Feel free to tell others.
The whole point of this is, how do you get this information out to everybody so everybody in the town knows?
And add it to the website as a frequently asked button or whatever. That's exactly a great idea.
I hate to be archaic, but we, we, in the old, in the old phone book-
Hold on a second, hold on a second, hold on a second.
There wasn't where to call. Blue pages.
It was out, it was out on my, it's on my property, on my property by my mailbox, it was out, so I called S E and G and they were out there within two days fixing mine and another one further down the street. And I think a lot of people want, want more lighting, but I know you have to pay for that.
Yep.
So, if you want a, you can call your electric company, they'll come put a light on your property, ten or twelve bucks. That light's been helpful a couple of times, that shooting, I, I saw two kids walking around there and that's, that's a way you can get up out of bed.
Yes. Yeah.
I know, but I'm saying, some people want more lighting.
You can get that, yeah.
You can get that.
Brent.
I know it's gonna run into a, but just another budget question, but these lights are forty-five years old. The pla- there's two things that have happened, trees have grown up, bushes have grown up, a lot of them blocked. The ones that aren't blocked, the plastic is deteriorating to the point, they don't put out a whole lot of light. So, we've got street lights on my street, but they're like hundred watt light bulbs. And I don't know, there's no answer other than throw the money at it, I mean-
Well, I mean, they need to be replaced and that's the person-
They need to be replaced, they do nothing lasts forever, the technology's gone, I mean, are these LED and this, that and the other? You know, it's, it's-
Yeah, we're paying, paying good rates on it, I think they ought to fix them.
Crime watch we wanna do?
Could we request as a town to both Mid Carolina and S E and G? To reconsider, I mean, the whole neighborhood needs to be redone.
They put up new lights and LEDs and things like that, it would raise my, double, triple, which they are-
It should go down because they cost less.
They're more efficient.
In the long run, but I mean, the labor cost-
It should, it should, but it's not gonna.
But they have to be prevented and made it stop, is basically what you're saying, it has to be upgraded.
But they don't have, right now, they're not equipped.
I, you know, I'm, I came from an office in Irma and we never changed my bulbs in our office. We changed the entire floor at times because that was the cheapest way to get them. Came time to put in LED, they ripped them all down, put in LED on the whole thing, that's just part of the system, you know, and if you don't ask, we're not gonna do it.
Okay. We also, they also talked about, in that same vein, they talked about speed bumps on Royal Tower and Rushing Wind.
Good luck with that.
They'd love to have it. Now, what are your thoughts about speed?
Well, that, there's a problem with even us, even putting speed bumps in. If we, the town, put them in, we take, we take over maintenance of the roads now.
Isn't that a liability issue as well?
Exactly. Why not four-way stops every now and then? That would be better, that would be better than speed bumps.
Okay.
My dad lives on Rushing Wind and he lives right on that hill, where the, where, where you're coming up, you can't see what's above it.
Okay, but you're saying four-way stops might be an answer?
Uh, it, it-
Royal Tower intersection, four, you just jam up there, that's a hill, it's a blind hill.
Lots of accidents, I think.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, that's, that's gotta be the highest tax in the world.
Where is that? Sanford and what?
Royal Tower, South Royal Tower and Chadford.
Also, the people that are living where there's no four-way stop and they put a four-way stop, you are increasing the noise.
Yep.
I mean, I, I lived in a road where they put a, a, a stop sign where there was none and it was incredible, the amount of noise. Squeaky brakes, or people's squeaky brakes or whatever, acceleration after, yeah.
Yep, absolutely.
Well, we could do like they do in Mount Pleasant, just build some roundabouts. And then, then people get lost.
Chief, do we have that, we have that, that Irma Ocre Strut speed thing working?
You mean a speed trailer?
Yeah.
They don't have a speed trailer.
We don't have that working anymore?
That, you mean when it flipped and had six batteries in it?
Yeah, it said that you're going fifty-five or whatever.
Yeah, it took more power to charge those six batteries.
Well-
Speed trailers, speed trailers are, speed trailers are pretty expensive.
Yeah.
If you do the, the math on that, you're thirty, forty thousand dollars.
Wow.
Town of Lexington has some nice ones.
Well, then my next question to you, chief, is what about, uh, radars, uh, speed traps?
We have every patrol man and woman at our, our agency who drives a marked unit has a radar in their car. Everyone is radar certified.
Okay.
Now, I mean, yeah, we get complaints all the time for people speeding, uh, but again, there are a lot of streets. We can't be on every road and we can't, I mean, I've got, we got limited resources.
Yeah.
Cause we're, I'll be honest with you, I love Walmart, but they give us a lot of business. Okay, um, and, you know, a lot of businesses give us a lot of, a lot of our time goes toward a lot of businesses. So, yeah, I mean, if I had more officers to go out there and write speeding tickets and run radar, if I had a radar, if I had a traffic unit that did, did nothing but traffic, we could probably solve a lot of the problems, but again, you're throwing money at them.
Is Walmart town of Irma?
It is.
It is?
Oh, yeah. And they pay a lot of our bills.
Yeah, the Walmart.
Valentine, yeah. The Valentine Walmarts in Irma.
I'm sorry, hold on, what'd you say, wait?
Do, do we have a full-time person that looks up grants for the city? Miss Belugie has hired, uh, young lady, a lawyer, that specializes in nothing but grants.
We, we just got the-
They have three people now, they really-
We just got a DUI grant officer, um, that's the first time that we've tried this. It's a hundred percent funded by the federal government for three years.
That's the good thing.
After three years, we have to absorb that position, um, and we can only, the DUI grant officer can only do DUI enforcement. He can't go to call-
They are, all they do is they look for grants for the city.
Right. He can't go to your barking call, he can't, he can't go to your barking dog call. Now, he can go to-
If there's a drunk making the dog bark.
That's a waste of resources.
Well, it's, it's-
It's in the grant.
The federal government is paying a hundred percent for us to look for a DUIs. Now, I will tell you this, if somebody's asking for us, like an officer needs assistance, he can go, I mean, it's, you know, I mean, we're not, we're not gonna, he sees something, I can't do it, I'm not, citizen's getting shot at, I ain't worth it, no, that's okay. But, uh, but for that to hap- I mean, you're, you're talking, uh, uh, grant positions are great, um, but-
I'm not talking about grant positions, I'm talking about the person that looks up for grants for the city, can you get their funding? They got a-
Grant rider.
And tons and tries to find grants, you know, but that's what, and, and they, they've gotten, well, I don't know why they cannot know your dreams. I think they got about a thousand magnolia trees down west, one of them providing by grants. But it's just different things that they, uh, quit it for more people to claim.
The way, so you know, we, we got, we're taking advantage of a lot of grants. We've planted trees with grants.
My thing, we have a person full-time that looks for these grants.
Me, Bob, Don, Courtney, we all do it. Walmart gives me two thousand dollars a year so I can put on my little, uh, citizen thing at, at the town park every year and I can buy footballs and throw them at kids or throw them at kids. That, that's the fun part of all that, getting a grant, I can throw stuff at people. But yes, the, uh, the grants, we do small things, a, a police officer's vest is eight hundred and seventeen dollars for five years.
But you have somebody to look at these grants.
Yes, there's a, there's a service out there through the federal government that pays for half of that vest.
No, no, he's asking who?
You have anybody?
No, you're looking at, you're looking at whoever. We've got about eight hours over the sidewalk that we got paid for.
The answer is no, we don't have a grant writer. Uh, the answer is, we probably need to look at hiring one or getting one.
A grant for the grant writer.
A grant writing person.
Get a grant for the grant writer.
A grant for the grant writer.
Well, real quick, if they're staying, we're getting, I'm getting thirty-five hundred dollars back on this.
Can we move along the police department?
Can we move on to the back of cars?
I mean, there's all kinds of grants out there, but if you had somebody looking at you, looking and applying for these grants, you're gonna miss out a lot.
I hear you folks, we got it. We're gonna look for a grant writer, that's something we'll talk about, okay? Again, I'm getting information from you to take back to council, okay? Um, let's talk about garbage pickup. One of the persons emailed me and said, they ride around, they leave mattresses, people have mattresses out there for weeks at a time, months at a time. They got a couch sitting on the side of the road. When do they pick these up? Do they pick them up? Can we have a schedule? The answer is yes. We can have a schedule get picked up. The process, Bob, is what? They call Tyler?
Says- They only have the pickup on Mondays, they either do it every week or every other week, depending on how much, how many calls they've got, come pick the stuff up. They do drive by and they'll tag the mattress you see out there on the side of the road for two weeks, they'll tag it, but the tag simply says to the owner, hey, we're not picking this up, you need to call this number to schedule a pickup, so.
And the reason why that is, is because Tyler's charges the town for that pickup. We're not charging the resident for the pickup, but, uh, they're charging the town, so they wanna make sure we're gonna pay before they pick it up.
Yes.
The system's not working. I know what y'all are saying, I know what y'all say is supposed to be happening. We're supposed to do this, it's the reason why, it's all true, except for the system's not working. It's not getting called, the mattress is still laying out there, I counted it on my calendar, mattress has been out there for five weeks. Trash at the bottom of the street, the pull bags is filled with construction trash, it's been there for four months and nothing ever happens. We took an effort, we've had a call, nothing happens, it's not working.
So, what's the answer? Nobody ever told me, so I can't call it in? Can you give me the address?
Okay, we went, we went through this two weeks ago and we already had it called in, um, I know, we went straight to the police department and it got called in and it still didn't result in an answer, so it's, I don't know.
Give Pop the address.
I mean, by calling, they'll be out there.
Okay, but we, we, we do have a way to fix this and that's to contact Tyler or contact Bob at Town Hall now.
Tyler, never put a notice on this mattress.
Okay.
Okay, that's shame on me.
Okay, so if, if Tyler put a notice on the mattress, then the homeowner would know, the homeowner, they don't.
Right.
They don't, they don't have a clue.
Has Tyler been called? That's the question. You don't know?
I don't know.
You don't know either, do you?
You can't say it at work.
I don't know.
Maybe that's the problem.
But the procedure to make sure that Tyler gets called isn't happening.
Well, if they, when they first put it out, if they just called Town Hall and said, we have a mattress that needs to be picked up, then the town would've made it.
Anybody called it? Not to get too personal, I'm not gonna give out the address, that person is currently in the state hospital, okay? So, it's not gonna get called. You can't rely on the-
Who put the, who put the mattress out?
Give me the mattress.
Okay, you can't rely on the homeowner to do this, okay?
How about you give the address to Bob, so we're wrong?
No, 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 I, I, I'm another homeowner, that's not the solution. You can't expect that other people to go around and say, oh, there's a mattress that's been out there for three weeks, it should've been taken care of the first week, but it wasn't.
Give him the address and let's solve the problem.
What about next week?
It's an ongoing problem, you're not just a-
We'll fix this problem, I'm not-
Well, see, that, that's, that's what I was saying earlier about this cutting somebody's grass or helping somebody out. Help the dad come town by saying, that refrigerator shouldn't be there, there's a metal company that will pick them up for free and they'll turn around and recycle the thing. Cause that's what I did with mine when I got rid of mine, I told, uh, Lowe's, I'll get rid, I'll take care of this, cause you're gonna probably do something with it- Cause that's what I did with mine when I got rid of mine, I told, uh, Lowe's, I'll get rid, I'll take care of this, cause you're gonna probably do something with it that's not gonna be the right thing to do. I called this guy and he said, sure, pick it up, I'll, I'll even pay you ten dollars for it, I said, no, you don't even pay me ten dollars for it, just get the dad gum thing. If you see something that's not right, do something about it, don't just keep driving by and going, well, when are they gonna pick that thing up?
So, so look at them, if you, if you, uh, have a mattress out by the road, and you got, they're picking up trash at your yard every day. If you don't call them, they're not gonna pick it up.
No, they're not, because that's not considered yard or household trash, that's a mattress.
But if they call them, they'll pick it up.
They will pick it up, but they charge the town of Irma for picking that up. But we don't pass the charge on to the town, uh, to the residents.
Where the town is not gonna pay for that?
No, we pay for it also.
Why can't we just tell Tyler, as a town, you see stuff, pick it up and take.
Well, keep in mind that we're not gonna pick, if somebody puts a mattress out in front of their house every week, we're not gonna pick it up every week.
And I, no, that's something, there's a limit to it.
That's why they have to call.
That's why they need to call the town, and the town records this house had a mattress and, uh, two months later, there's another mattress there and they say, well, this guy had a mattress last week, and this guy had a, this guy's selling mattresses or something.
Let me, let me try one more time, please. The procedure is supposed to be that as Tyler drives up and down every street in the entire town, and they see something, they're supposed to stop and tag it. Okay?
Right.
And if they did that one thing that they're supposed to be doing, then we wouldn't be having any of these discussions. Because the owner would then know, it says on the tag, call this number, okay? If they don't call the number, then the police come by and they see that it was tagged and they see the date on it from three or four weeks ago, and then they'll step in and they'll do something about it. So it takes care of itself. But if we don't do the first thing, nothing else happens.
So what we're gonna do is we're gonna ask Bob to call Tyler, speak with the owner, and get this straightened out. That's it.
Say it again?
I said we're gonna have Bob call the owner, Tyler's.
Right.
And get it straightened out.
There you go.
Thank you.
When I get an address.
No, no, every, every street that you find these things, they're supposed to tag. He's telling you, and other residents are telling you, that it's not happening. It's not happening.
So, give the man the address for the mattress so we can solve this problem.
Call this one.
If you will commit to get it tagged properly.
Yes.
I'll call it. Even if he doesn't, please.
You keep in mind, I have already called it in.
Well, give it to Bob, okay?
Okay.
Moving on.
All right, next thing, moving on. Um, somebody called about sagging pants.
Well, well, Mr., Mr. Walker, before, before you start, that's already, the, the state legislature has a bill before the state legislature.
I'm telling you what the citizens, the citizens have commented on it, you know. Bigger fish.
If you wanna show your behind, I mean, I don't wanna look at it.
That might end that trend quickly.
Yeah, right.
I don't know how, everyone has a different view of everything and a right to that particular individual. But with the sagging pants issue, um, I just wanted to be known that I think it's wrong to involve police in fashion. Uh, there are many fashions that I find extremely offensive and ridiculous, but those people have the right to wear that fashion without the police getting involved. If, 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 if men are wearing pants sagging particularly, I think mostly that's a black young man thing, um.
Actually, it was Marty Mark that started that.
That's no worse than back in the sixties and seventies when everybody was wearing that long blonde hair and everybody was in an uproar, they got that long hair, and I was like, what's the problem with their hair? I think it's ridiculous, the police should not be involved in that, and that's just my opinion, it's, it's just going too far.
I think everybody agrees with you.
No, they don't, because somebody posted it on Facebook and I didn't know about this law. It's gonna be a nightmare when you have police stopping folks because of their time.
Yeah.
Saying, Susan, everybody needs room.
In the room, we agree.
What I said, room.
This is going live, this is it. People out there who don't agree with me, it's just wrong.
What else you got?
Okay, so we're not gonna fashion police anybody in town, okay? Uh, okay, the last thing, and one of the things that I thought was very, very well put, and Mr. Wade, you gave this to us. Um, holding more community events in the park, in the community park. Uh, he posted that and said, is there a way to get an electronic billboard to announce the events that are going in the park from Lake Murray Boulevard? As well as doing more what I call getting to know your neighbor events, um, National Night Out. Uh, we got plenty of money from the police department to do cookouts, right, chief?
If Walmart gives me that money, yeah, I'll cook.
In the park, at, at no cost to the town residents, but that, things like that to get to know each other.
Serve food, they will come.
Is there any, a Facebook event March third?
Yes.
March, March third?
Yes.
March third?
Didn't we already have, just as a complete devil's advocate, didn't we already have issues with funding for Ocrestrut?
Not for.
No. Well, there was a problem years ago that Ocrestrut was losing money by the ton. And three years ago, the town administrator and the town staff took over the Ocrestrut and it made its first profit in ten years. And it, and it's not to make profit, it should just break even. But because of donations from different, different companies around the town of Irma, the, uh, Lexington County Hospital, uh, it, it makes money and we, and the Ocrestrut gives scholarships, uh, two for Dutch Fork, two for Irma High School each year.
I'm a big fan of festival activities, like.
Yes.
I don't wanna see another event get started and then, you know, maybe not this council, but the next council, or the one after that. You know, it just goes to the wayside because of funding issues.
Well, well, we could do things that are more community orientated, like, uh, chili cook-off. You know, that's vol- getting people to volunteer to make their own special chili recipes, you know.
Try something, eh, with the farmer's market.
We had a farmer's market.
Wish that would come back.
Exactly. I beg your pardon? Yeah, well.
That, it's at the Irma.
High school, I think is doing it.
Yeah.
Isn't that why the.
No, no.
Irma's just the same farmer's market that's been in Irma forever. You know, it was, it was here, and they moved it to the community park, and now it's down at the high school. It's privately owned, it's a private business.
So, this is probably, brings up the, the center of Irma, that building, the center of Irma, why can't we use that, paint it, make it pretty? Put, put Dutch Fork symbol on it, the Irma High School symbol, make it pretty, so can we, that's the entrance to Irma?
Well, it's privately owned.
I know.
And I understand.
Have you seen, it looks like the floor is falling out.
Well, this's got other problems too, but, uh, I understand that, uh, that whole block was being looked at by, uh, a major, major company that wanted to put a grocery store in there. And. Yes, Whole Foods was looking at that, that whole block, they were looking at the bank, Jake Moore's, whatever that is behind that, and the whole thing that used to be Home Furniture or whatever Mr. Dula's building is. And everybody was on. Yeah, everybody was on board except the eyesore.
I think she's talking about the other, the other building where they.
Mr. Parker.
How about that whole?
The one that needs to be torn down.
That's what I'm talking about, that's what I'm talking about. That's what I'm talking about, that whole block.
Why is there not something done to tear that building to the ground? It's been sitting there for years as an eyesore, I tell people to come into town to my house, they take the exit. And they say, what in the hell is that building? And they say, isn't there another way to get to your house to have to go by that ugly building? Why can't you guys do something, and you too?
Can't do a thing about it, we tried to have it condemned, and the building is solid as a rock, it ain't gonna fall back.
It's an eyesore.
Brett, Brett would add, wants to speak, okay, guys. We'll, we'll, we'll start off.
We don't own it.
Aye.
It's privately owned. It's currently for lease, says it on the sign. It says, lease, build a suit, okay?
I have a question before you move on, how can it be leased when it doesn't have enough parking spaces to, to, to be leased?
Because it says, lease, build a suit, what build a suit means.
He's gonna tear it down and then build it again? Ah. Okay.
That's what the plan is, that's what the plan's been since we started on this whole thing. We had to convince the owner, bad, this is not gonna work, this is a better plan, he took the plan, okay? We're in discussions, we have pieces of paper, they're not signed. Okay?
But they, but they want the whole. They want the whole block, correct?
No, they only want part of it.
The town should make an offer to this guy. The town make an offer.
And where are we gonna get the money? Well, we don't have property tax in the town of Irma on your cars, your motorcycles, or your home, which is one thing that, that made me happy. Cause when I lived in City of Columbia, I was paying twice what I'm paying for my house now. We're not in the real estate business. He wants, he wants a lot of money. It, it's his gold mine, and he doesn't really need the money, he lives in Mount Pleasant, he doesn't see it every day, it doesn't bother him.
I'm, I'm sorry. Julius, you don't know, that's not true.
He doesn't live in Mount Pleasant?
Right now, he's living in Columbia.
Okay, but he lives in Mount Pleasant, that's his permanent residence.
Right now, he lives in Columbia.
Okay.
Okay, so, you know, it is for lease, we're under negotiations, the negotiations include tearing the building down and building a new building. Okay, is that not what we want?
I think that's.
So me, down this century.
What's the question on is how much it costs that you have to write a check to go and build.
Sorry, but that's, that's, that's the hard, that's the hard Irma, but it needs to look.
His, his personal property. Okay.
I know, but we have, we have law ordinances to say that buildings are supposed to look one way or another.
And, and it's currently in compliance.
No, it, it doesn't look like it to me from the outside, that's the worst.
Well, it is.
That roof wouldn't pass the test.
Okay, hold on, hold on, guys, hold on, guys. We're, Mr. Chip, what is right, the building is privately owned, it's somebody's property. Yes, we would love for it to get fixed, painted, turned, torn down, whatever, but unless this guy wants to do it, he owns it.
But he'll come after a resident, uh, that has a double-litneyed house, and it's the same, it's the same argument, is, there's property rights that have to be respected.
Right.
Like the car wash, there's nothing you can be getting done about the car wash, it looks terrible, or it needs to be redone, but we can't do nothing about it, right?
You don't own it. Private owned.
And I think this, this issue in particular is one that's going to require some patience. Real estate deals do not happen overnight, especially when it's gonna entail nearly leveling a building and redesigning a suit. There's things in progress, we have to be patient with them, it's an extended compliance, as far as I know. It looks terrible, yes, you don't know where this town.
What's that?
How long have you lived in this town?
I've lived here about five years.
I've been here thirty years.
I've been here thirty years, it's never been a nice looking building.
That building's condition is deteriorated unless you slap a brush or paint on it.
Okay, we all agree, we all agree. The owner agrees, we all have eyes, we understand.
Building.
We all understand what the situation of the building is.
No, we don't.
But the, but the situation is very clear, there's architects involved, there's engineers involved, there's lawyers involved, we're coming to the table, we're negotiating, we're gonna do.
All right.
Doing exactly what we've been asked to do, okay?
Most people have to lower the price of houses, because they don't.
First of all, it's not for sale, so we're not lowering the price, and that's not an issue. Okay, we have an agreement on that. On the, on the leasing, we have an agreement.
Not for sale at any.
Yeah.
Not for sale.
Okay.
There's never been an offer.
Sorry. Hey.
Sure it's for sale at any price.
All right, let's, let's keep it moving forward, folks, we're almost at the end of our meeting. And, and thank you for the spirited debate we've had here, I really learned a lot from y'all. And hope the folks at home that saw it live, you know, took a lot of information in. There is two more things I'd like to talk about that was on the, um, on the Facebook page, and that was establishing a watch program. I think Mr. Wade had a meeting last Tuesday.
Usually not, it's past Tuesday night.
Yeah, and how did that go, I said?
It went great, and, uh, we get a few more each meeting like we did last time, I think it's gonna be successful.
And you're, you're talking about doing it for the entire town or for certain areas, or what?
We're gonna try to get the whole town involved, uh, it's, it's, people have to be patient for it to grow and organize and.
Right.
But I, I, I feel real hopeful from what I've seen from the last meeting and, uh, the next meeting, March eighth, Thursday, June.
Okay. Chief, what can we do to facilitate a watch program? I guess by neighborhood or by the, it's in pre- in precincts or some, I mean, it's kinda ambitious to say the entire town. It's kinda ambitious to do that.
Bobby Dale was. Yes, Martin Dale headed that up, um.
And he was at the meeting Tuesday night?
He was at the meetings, um, we've had a program before, we, we gave people, uh, vests to wear, you know, so they'll get a little bit of cars and. We gave every, you know, everyone had phone numbers and, um, so, I mean, it's, it's a great program, we've had it before. And, uh, you know, it's, it takes a lot, takes a lot. But if the community's willing to do it, we're willing to have them walk the streets, I love it.
March eighth here?
That's correct.
At what time?
Six, six to seven.
But in, in order, I mean, if you like funding and stuff, I mean, we could, we could provide some vests and, I mean, we can't provide a radio. I mean, those things are five thousand dollars a piece. Uh, and then, yeah, everything's got a price tag.
Raffles legal or not?
Sir?
Can you have, do we have raffles, or is that not legal? Like we want a raffle on the TV or something at the radio?
This is private, yeah, it's, it's private, you can do whatever you want.
Y'all are non, y'all are not.
I thought maybe do some raffle stuff for racing, huh?
I, I would think, I would think some of the businesses, uh, in the town would, would offer to give some money, uh, to that also. I mean, it's, it's, it's a great thing that you're trying to do.
Yeah, it's, it's what I'm trying to do, I realize that, I wanna do a few odd different stuff, maybe put up some cameras in different places and have people monitoring on the tiers. I wanna have groups that visit elderly that can't get out and check on them, safe houses, get these schools where teenagers are hanging out, not, not to be aggressive or hurt anybody, just be a presence. And let them know, you know, hey, you behave, you're good, you're not behaving, we're watching.
That's what put it on record, the mayor had something nasty to say about that, you know, thing he wrote. He said the police already have that, and we don't need that. I think he was more or less saying it's been, they, they, y'all had it, he had.
Yes.
They had, because we have a crime watch sign on our street. So I know it's been done before, and, and I kinda think that might be what he was. He needs to get behind us and help us, not put us down.
It's not a political debate here. They're making it one.
Okay, and. So. Establishing a crime watch program or that's IPD's responsibility?
Well, it's the community's responsibility, we'd love to be a part of it.
Okay.
And you know what, I, I researched that a little bit, and Richland County will also help, um, just contact them.
So, so that's Richmond County and?
Now, I don't know about Lexington, but I know that Richmond will.
I think Richmond had an officer that spec- that, that was his, his only, that was his thing.
Yeah, Leon Lott is huge for community.
Leon Lott's on, on the ball, yeah.
Okay, is there any other things that y'all wanna bring up that I haven't covered tonight?
Barry, while we have everybody here. I'm gonna be doing stormwater education this year. So what I'd like to do is get with any neighborhood, uh, homeowners association, and when y'all are having meetings, give me ten minutes and I'll give you some stormwater education. So what we're talking about. No, I'll, I'll do it myself. I won't make, I won't make them watch the video, I won't make them watch the video. All the town employees have to watch the video every time. Hopefully my presentation will be a little more entertaining than the video.
It was last night.
So, just call Town Hall and they'll put you in contact with me. Thank you.
Any other thing? Yes. Yes, I'm sorry.
I have two items, I'm not sure this is the proper venue for that, but I'm just gonna bring out one of them. It's been about nine months since I appeared before a regular council meeting. With Elmer Danko's family, he had just passed away around Memorial Day last year. And during the, uh, receipt of communications part of the agenda, I made a plea with the council to consider establishing.
to consider establishing an Elmer Danko Award in recognition of his community service, not just to the Coastworth subdivision, but to the entire town. And I mentioned that Elmer had attended faithfully many years of council meetings. He was on, I believe, the zoning, uh, award adjustment committee at one time. He served with me as, uh, as president of our homeowners association. He knew the people in Lexington County by their first name when he called to get anything done regarding super, uh, infrastructure for the town. For years, he kept up this communication with public service, Public Works in Lexington to have our roads paved, when nobody else in the town would get them paved. And who did that? Elmer did that. Elmer helped to set up a voter forum over the years when we had different people running for council and mayor elections. Elmer went door to door for years, talking to the residents of this town when there were certain items of public interest that we thought they might be interested in sharing their opinion, which they did. And I thought it was appropriate that the town, in recognition of his service, that the council consider establishing an award that would be given to someone who was not an elected official, someone who was not in a business, uh, someone who was an individual, not related to any other organization, but just some individual who showed a commitment to the values that this town likes to espouse. I, I even offered at the time to put a hundred dollars in front of the council as a way to begin this. Well, it's been nine months and I've not heard anything. I'd like to be able to tell Elmer's family that his legacy would continue. And at the night, at the night that we made that, uh, presentation, I thought I had some, some sense of commitment from the council that they would at least consider this and do it a full-throated discussion among themselves or among the public to see what the sense of the council was. And I'd like to acquire what the status of that discussion might be. I brought my checkbook with me tonight, by the way.
Well, again, this is not a council meeting, so-
I understand.
But we can definitely bring that back to the council and the mayor, um, hopefully would've addressed that by now, I'm surprised he didn't, but, um, we did give you an okay, I think, at the time, that we were all in agreement with that, but again, you know, I'll write it down and I'll bring it back to our council and say, "Hey, what's happening with this?" And then hopefully at the next meeting, they'll make an announcement or say, "Hey, this is what we're doing for that or not doing for that."
Well, I, I would request that you fellows here, I know there's not a quorum, or maybe there is, I don't know. But if you, if there is, consider adding this to an agenda when you're ready to discuss it, it may not be at the next meeting.
Right.
It may be, you know, in your second meeting.
We're gonna add it to the agenda. Bob, put it on the agenda next meeting. There you go. Okay. We'll discuss it.
Um, I think maybe I'll bring that up prior to the-
Okay. Anything else? Did anybody get anything from this? Did y'all glean something from this? I hope you did, I did. Uh-oh. Oh, you did? Okay. Thought you'd get ready to get on me, okay.
So I do have another question, uh, was there a timeframe on when they will be finished with our screen?
They told me four to six weeks, I don't know, where did you hear anything different?
No.
So four to six weeks from now?
Right, they had another crew that was coming in, they were here and clean out the detention line.
Thank you.
Folks, thank you very much. I allowed a two hours for this meeting and we got five more minutes left in this two hour block. Thank you so much for staying on topic and helping me get us, get this information from you. As you see, I took notes and my scribe back there took notes and we will get this to the council. Hopefully in the next two or three council meetings, we'll have some actions being happened from that.
And now I, I make a motion, does anyone wanna make a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second?
Second. Yeah, I'm out, done, come on. Yes. Thank you, thanks for coming. I hope so, thank you, thank you for coming, thank you.
He's dead.